We should call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. It is now 6:00 PM. I want to say thank you for everyone for attending this evening. This is a big crowd for tonight. Just a reminder, please to mute your cell phones. And if we can get started with the invocation, Commissioner Lovick, please rise.
Lord, we're thankful we come to you tonight, Lord, with humble hearts. Lord, as we just come into you, Lord, thank you for protecting our county and our city and our town, Lord. Thank you for the job that each member and staff member here has done during the COVID event, Lord. Just continue to give them strength, Lord, give them encouragement, let them know they are doing the right things. Lord, as we come in, we just ask you, our city, our county, our state, our nation, thank you for each one that has helped protect that, Lord. As we come before you tonight and do the business of this county, Lord, we ask for wisdom and guidance in each situation that we come upon, Lord. Let it be for your glory, and we pray it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you can see on the agenda, is there any additional agenda items to add? Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, does any commissioner have an additional item to add to the agenda? The approval of the consent agenda, the consent agenda is before you. Any discussion?
Can we get a vote on the agenda before we get the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, can we, I need a motion on the...
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I think this is a regular agenda.
A regular agenda, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I got, I got additional agenda. A motion been made to approve the original agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we can move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have public comments this evening. And just a reminder, you do have three minutes to speak. The attorney will be keeping time, and she will yell out time in a very loud, boisterous voice. Please remove your mask when you come to the podium. You're more than welcome to speak freely and not be muffled. So, first individual I have is Jerry Foley. And please state your full name and address when you get to the microphone, Mr. Foley.
Thank you. Is this on? Okay. Jerry Foley, and I live in Apex, North Carolina. My, my role is, is I am the Senior Director of...
We'll, we'll need your address, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. 703 Scotch Ridge Trail, Apex, North Carolina. And I am the Senior Director of Competitive Swimming for the YMCA of the Triangle. I have thirty-five, over thirty-five years of competitive aquatics experience, college coach for twenty-five years. And I am down here to support Ashley Long's vision of placing a dinodome which would enclose the OT Sloan aquatic facility that you have in your county. I don't know if you realize what a gold mine you have there. Fifty meters of water is special. There's not many of them around in the greater Triangle area. So for you all to have one down here that's heated, that has lanes, the next step would be to enclose it and create a year-round opportunity for aquatic programming. I see the potential for potential partnerships, whether that's with the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club. I see it being a conduit to Raleigh. Raleigh is probably one of the most competitive swimming markets in the country, and you could host many competitions down here, events, fill hotels, restaurants, et cetera. So, and really what I'm asking for is to, at a later meeting, to allow Ashley to do a full presentation on her vision. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ashley. You didn't put your last name down here. Former teacher.
Sorry, no. So, my name is Ashley Graves, and my address is 398 Back Bay, Sanford, North Carolina, 27332. So this is not the first time I've come before you guys speak about aquatics. It's still very important to me, but with the COVID crisis, we've actually had a really hard time in Sanford. The YMCA program, Yoda, shut down their year-round competitive program. So there has been no year-round swim team here in roughly, and what is it, six months? Six months, give or take. But beyond that, there's been no swim lessons in like over a year because of COVID. So now the drowning rate is even higher here, and we've taken a gap. The Tramway Water Safety Program lost funding back, what, last year? It's been two years? It's been almost two years since we've done that program, and that was another outlet for children to learn how to swim. And so now we don't even have that, but we have this awesome pool just sitting there, well equipped with heaters, a new filtration system, it's been repainted. USA Swimming, the national governing body, believed in Sanford enough to donate lane lines from the national championships here that are just sitting and have used the pace clock. We have all these resources that are not being used year-round. And it's my goal to see that children, adults, babies, parents with mom, learn to swim. Everyone has the ability to do that. And the rate for drowning in Sanford, based on our statistics compared with USA Swimming, says almost fifty percent of the population cannot. If the parent doesn't know how to swim, the likelihood of the child doesn't know how to swim. So I really want to see some year-round facilities in operation here. I'd like to work in unison with the Boys and Girls Club at OT Sloan to open up more after-school activities here in Sanford that would get more kids off the waitlist of Boys and Girls Club and just really open up more opportunities to do so. And I have a full presentation that I'd really like the opportunity to do here at the next meeting, if you guys will take me. And in addition to that, I believe in the water safety program that Ms. Langston and I were doing at Tramway, enough to have collected goggles for every single school. And I have them here along with two boxes for the Boys and Girls Club, each containing sixty pairs of goggles for that program. So they're here at the back, probably can't see them, but they're there. So that's my gesture. I'd really like to see these programs take place and have a root in Lee County. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
As the chair, if we're going to be allowing people to take their mask off and touch the mic, we ought to clean it after each person.
Okay, yes, it's good advice.
It's coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Reeves, for reminding us. Kara Langston.
Hello, my name is Kara Simmons Langston, and I live at 2201 Spring Lane, Sanford, North Carolina, 27330. I am the physical education teacher at Tramway Elementary. I've been there for almost twenty years. We've been doing the water safety program for about twenty-two years. This past year, it did not get funded. And when it started, it started off as parents paid for it. And then as it evolved, we started hiring more lifeguards and swim instructors, and we also would have boat, we had blow-up boats out there, and they would try on life jackets. We, they learned a lot about water safety and boat safety. So to have that kind of program going, I needed more people to help with it. So Pentair Pools would partner with me, and they were wonderful. Year after year, they, they funded the program, but then they got to where you needed to go through their national program in order to get a grant, and we couldn't get it from them anymore. So sadly, that ended, and we haven't, we've done it in the past two years. But I want to tell you, some of these kids have never been exposed to a swimming pool. And I feel like what we have done is taught them lifesaving skills, and it made them interested enough in swimming that they'd go home and ask their parents to get swim lessons. I feel like we helped save lives, and I am really sad that the program hasn't been able to go on from here. So I really want to encourage you to look into putting this into every school, elementary school, at least with a few grade levels, so that the students can get the experience that they need to hopefully save their lives and somebody else's life in the future. So that is my spiel to you, and if you want me to come back and show you pictures, I have great pictures that I can show you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Samantha Jeffries.
I am Samantha Jeffries. My address is 1501 Gormley Circle in Sanford also. I am here to just follow along on these footsteps as a swim parent. My son, who will speak next, took his first swim lessons at OT Sloan under Parks and Rec when he was five years old. It was an opportunity for him to learn a life skill for water safety. He continued swim lessons the next year at the Nautilus, and in turn, it evolved into his sport. He's always done well, and he competitively swam all the way through high school. A year-round program here would benefit this county. It provides the opportunity, you know, like making a pool available will teach children, as Ashley has said, water safety, but the ability for survival in other situations. Being a year-round swimmer taught my kid a whole lot about dedication, a lot about commitment, time management, perseverance. He just grew immensely from that. A year-round program would only benefit the schools to excel and grow their swim programs also. Just being in the conference that Lee County and Southern Lee are in, I can just tell you, when we go to those swim meets, like our schools had the fewest amount of swimmers. And if there were opportunities for them to practice at a larger facility, that would truly make a difference. As a parent, I was on the board of the swim program, and for great swim things to happen, you need coaches, parents, and swimmers. And I would just like to encourage the county to do what they can, to use fifty meters of water to teach and reach lots and lots of children and adults for swimming. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Andrew Jeffries.
Hello, my name is Andrew Jeffries, and I live at 1501 Gormley Circle, Sanford, North Carolina, and here to talk to you about swimming too. So first, I'm going to talk about what swimming means to me. Swimming was all that I loved growing up. It was a way to meet new friends. It was my sport, which contributed to my exercise every day, and it was my little getaway to go have some fun every day after school, take a break from homework or being around the family, just go have some fun and where you needed to be serious, but you could also cut up with your friends every once in a while. Next, I got a job in aquatics. I was a lifeguard at the YMCA and also at the neighborhood pool in Westlake, and that led me, swimming and being a lifeguard led me to become a swim coach. I was a coach employee by Jerry at the YMCA here in Sanford before it got shut down. And just, I think everybody else, all these kids, I've seen plenty of talent go through Sanford, and I've been here swimming for about twelve years, and I've gone through countless number of coaching changes. And just seeing kids give up after they can't have the same coach, if we have a solid program here, just seeing talent give up is, it hurts. So these kids need not only, I think, a swim team, but some swim lessons, just to learn how to swim, whether they're swimming at the neighborhood pool or a backyard pool or swimming at a lake, in the ocean, go to the beach, anything. So it, and also it taught me many things, time management. I don't know what I would have done without time management. And dedication, working hard to things like what swimming taught me, setting goals, like wanting to get to certain meets, and taught me, set my mind and go for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is Old Business. And under Old Business, we have to approve the MOU for Project Safe Neighborhoods for this year. And my screen went down. So we can start this off?
Um, as you'll see in, can you hear me? Okay. As you'll see in your agenda packages, it was in 2019. The Commissioners Meeting with the Board of Commissioners heard from, at that time it was the District Attorney Vernon Stewart, we have the new District Attorney here, Suzanne Matthews, about Project Safe Neighborhoods. The project started in Lee County in 2014, and in 2019, the U.S. Department of Justice asked communities to step up and increase their support for the program to help improve results. So last year, the Board approved the Project Safe Neighborhood MOU that is set to expire in February of this year, and the District Attorney's Office has requested that the county and the city approve a new MOU that will now run from February to June of 2022 so that we can keep it on the fiscal year. And my understanding is the District Attorney's Office is present if the Board has any questions about the program. And a representative from the law, Sheriff's Office.
I offer a motion to approve. I'm familiar with it.
Motion has been made to approve the MOU for Project Safe Neighborhoods. Any discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Lovick, anything, anything to add? Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good, I'll offer the motion.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'd just like somebody to come up and tell, you know, the effects of what's going on with the program since COVID from March last year going forward, just a, just a brief summary.
Let's maintain our social distancing.
Good evening, my name is Rob Lang. I'm with the United States Attorney's Office. I'm the Project Safe Neighborhoods Coordinator for eleven sites throughout the Middle District, twenty-four counties, three and a half million people in our district. We're proud of what's going on here in Lee County. They updated in 2019. We really engaged the Sheriff's Department, and they stepped on board and made it a more of a county-wide. Sheriff Carter endorsed this, but this is the primary domestic violence reduction strategy. This is my fifth administration that I've worked on that with. As of today, we have a new acting U.S. Attorney. So it has transcended politics, D.R., independent. It's about combining and working with all the local law enforcement agencies, probation, District Attorney's Office, adult and juvenile, in prevention, intervention and reentry, aggressive identification of the small percentage of folks that are holding the sixty-five thousand people in this county hostage, just a handful of people, just a hundred, you know, and identifying those individuals and trying to drive at them with all programming, preventing the crime with their kids, intervening when they come back from prison so they don't go again, and aggressively identifying those folks that are primarily shooting each other, primarily beefing. There's a little bit of group or gang dynamic involved, wannabe, doesn't make any difference. They're acting out as if they are involved in these groups. It's a young flavor, but the strategy is to work together to continue to drive down the rates and be accountable to each other, work together, share information. We've just finished a process that took us about ten hours with University of North Carolina Greensboro, with all the law enforcement agencies and probation, DA's office, everybody in the county. We sat together for two days. We talked about areas where there are problems. We talked about addresses. We talked about individuals. We talked about leaders. We talked about kids that were on the fence. We talked about emerging programs, a lot of things going on. COVID's hurt us because we haven't been able to develop the relationships and take it the next step. That's, but we, there's no question, part of this MOU is to, is to provide a part-time coordinator that's funded by Broadway, the county, and the city. And the data's been in for fifteen years, where there's good coordination at the local level, somebody who knows the lay of the land, somebody who knows you, understands problems, and we work together, and we can, we can do good things. So we've got opportunities, you know, the DA Matthews has been at all the meetings. Stewart handed the gavel over, and I'm glad the way she's grabbing it. So we're here as a partner, we're not leaving, and we've put a lot of time in down here in Lee County. We think it's an opportunity to really be a model for counties between fifty and a hundred thousand people in our district.
Yes, ma'am.
Just briefly, COVID, as you said, has...
If you could come to the mic, ma'am, so we're being recorded.
Yes. COVID has hampered us to some extent, but that doesn't mean there hasn't been work behind the scenes, as Mr. Lang indicated. We have had meetings, and we have been working with law enforcement to prepare for the next step. Of course, a big part of that is community support and community outreach, and hopefully as some of these restrictions lift, we can engage in that a little bit more, and that's really one of the next big things that we have. But this position, the funding of this position will truly help us to make sure we don't lose any of the traction that we were gaining pre-COVID and to continue to move forward.
We have a representative from Sheriff's Office here.
Yes, sir. How you doing? Agent Chris Thompson with the Sheriff's Office. I'm in the Narcotics Division. When Mr. Lang and DA Matthews approached me about being a part of this task force, I immediately jumped at it. I've lived in Sanford all my life, and I've known about the violence that comes with it. And I think this is an excellent opportunity to kind of spearhead it and take it at, at the roots. And I just, I really believe in this, in this wholeheartedly, and I'm excited to be a part of it. And that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner LaValle, any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner LaValle?
No, I thank you all for being here.
Commissioner Connect. Mr. Carver?
No comment.
Madam Barrister.
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. We do thank you all for being here and what you do on a daily basis because we know what's out there, and we do appreciate it very much, what you do. Okay, the motion has been made to approve the MOU for Project Safe Neighborhoods. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under New Business. Under New Business, Resource Management Landfill Scale, approve the purchase of a new scale for the Resource Management Facility, budget impact of forty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Cherry.
Good evening. As you, as you know, I'm asking tonight that you approve the purchase of a new scale down at the Resource Management Facility. The current scale, we purchased in nineteen ninety, and it's served well, but time and the weather has basically taken its toll, and it has collapsed and been condemned and is no longer in working order. And it's beyond repair, well, I shouldn't say it's beyond repair, but it will cost much more, much more to repair it than it will to replace.
Do I hear a motion? Motion been made to approve the purchase of new scales for the Resource Management Facility. Any questions? Discussion?
What do you do with the old one? You want to junk it or...
Yeah, actually, Central Carolina Scale, who is going to be doing the work and putting a new one in, has an agreement with Learn and Metal. They'll take the scrap from the old scale and actually help with some of the cost of equipment that they need to do to, that would, that we'd actually be paying for to rent this equipment, so it's, it's, it's going to help save a little money.
Thank you. Any other discussion, question?
Mr. Chairman, I just need to let the Board know and be aware that the funds for this will come from the Solid Waste Fund, not the General Fund, so we do have an adequate fund balance to pay for this.
Thank you, sir. Seeing there's no other questions, all those in favor of approving the purchase of new scales for the Resource Management Facility, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Next item on the agenda is request for public hearing on Spec Building Number Three. Madam, Madam Barrister.
Saga and CCEP have requested that the City of Sanford and the County of Lee, us, County, enter into another MOU to lease a third spec building at CCEP for economic development purposes. What is on the agenda tonight? We don't, it is just for the Board to take a vote to hold the public hearing at our next Board meeting on March fifteenth. So if the Board votes tonight, then we'll have the public hearing, we'll have the advertisement and have the public hearing at the next Board meeting. And by that time, we'll have the MOU on the agenda for the Board's review.
Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, move.
Motion's been made to request a public hearing on Spec Building Three on the fifteenth of March. All those in favor signify, oh, excuse me, any discussion? Any questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public hearing is addressed. Next item on the agenda, adopt resolution, excuse me, establishing the, excuse me, updating the establishment of the Lee County Ambulance Advisory Committee. Again, Madam Barrister.
Yes. So on the agenda this evening, you have a copy of the ordinance for the operation of ambulance services within Lee County that was adopted in nineteen eighty-two. As you will see, that in Section fourteen point one of the ordinance, it does list that the duties of the ambulance advisory committee include receiving the franchise proposals from potential providers, studying the proposals for conformance, and recommending to the Board of Commissioners the award of the franchise to the application, submitting the best proposal. So what we're asking the Board to do tonight is adopt an updated resolution re-establishing the advisory committee. The original resolution that I was able to find in the minutes was from nineteen eighty-one, and at that time, Lee County ran EMS in-house. So who was the permanent member of that committee was the EMS director. Since we no longer run EMS in-house, what we have proposed is for the manager to have the authority to appoint the members on the committee. The emergency management director will serve as that permanent committee member for staff. We felt it was necessary to have at least one staff member on the committee. And then there will be two individuals that will be appointed that are involved in the healthcare field, and then two members with prior EMS knowledge. The members will serve two-year terms, oh, wait, I didn't update that. Actually, I apologize, they're going to be three-year terms. I didn't update that in the agenda abstract. I apologize. So the members will serve three-year terms, and they'll meet, once we go through this process, they'll continue to meet quarterly with whomever we adopt a franchise with. So this evening, we're just asking you to adopt the updated resolution.
You have the membership of three years in the actual document?
Yes.
actual document. Will, will there be any alternates?
We did not list any alternates, but if the board would like us to, we could put one or two alternates. We can make that change to the resolution.
Well, you're going to be picking them, what you think?
I think it's going to be a handful for the five. You know, we have, we have two entities that are interested in putting in proposals and evaluating those proposals. It's going to be a time-consuming event. So, I think just keeping the five would probably be a good thing. And if one has to, you know, withdraw or something like that at some point, I'll just appoint another one. So, don't, if you have an alternate, I feel like the alternate needs to attend as well and go through all that material. And there's going to be a lot of material that comes with these applications. So, I would prefer just to have the five.
Okay.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lovick?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner Lavalley? Dr. Connect? Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
No questions? Do I have a, a motion? Motion's been made to approve the adopting a resolution updating the establishment of Lee County Ambulance Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have work to do.
Yes.
Yes, we do. This is getting started.
Yes.
Managers report. January 2021 financial reports, Mr.?
Good evening. You have before you the financial report for the month of January 2021. As I always remind you, please remember that sales tax runs three months behind. Tax collections as a percentage of our budget through January 2021 are 0.31% ahead of the same time period last year. So, that's a, we're on target there. In reviewing the expenditures, our target was 58.33%. As I explain to you every month, you will see that a lot of our departments show being over that due to the encumbrances inclusion. If I break encumbrances out, there are only a few departments over strategic services, elections and IT. Strategic services is overdue to maintenance contracts. Elections is overdue to the cost of the November general election. And IT is overdue to annual maintenance contracts and costs associated with their move to Douglas Drive. And it's, you'll see those balance out as we move on into the, through the year. Also attached are the sales tax reports for the collections through November of 2020. And as I anticipated, in November, our collections were reduced by a refund, our refund for sales tax that we received and along with other nonprofits' requests that came through. So, that's why you will see that our sales tax collections dropped from 1.4 or almost 1.5 in October down to 1,250,000. In November, I will tell you that we got December's numbers. And when you see those, you will see that we jumped almost $500,000 back up for the month of December for our total sales tax collections. So, we are still in the 2019 to 20% growth area in sales tax. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about our financial report.
Any questions for the assistant manager? No questions? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Keep spending in Lee County.
Okay. Managers report?
Yeah, yes, sir. The only thing I need to add is that we had a little incident this morning or over the weekend at the General Services Building. As, as you probably all remember, during the COVID, we tried to buy new water fountains that were, you know, handless, you know, that you put the bottles in and the water comes out. And we were having those installed on Friday. And one of them was obviously not installed properly. So, we had a water leak on the first floor of the government center. And the water is extensive. I can't say that the dam is as extensive at this point because we're still cleaning up the mess. But there's a lot of water, a lot of water under the, under the building. We've obviously have already been making contact with our insurance company and the plumber is also making contact with his. So, we, but in the meantime, we have to get, we have to get it, work things fixed. The carpet in the Gordon Wicker Room was drenched. Had about an inch of, or two of water in there. And then the water underneath the building, we have, actually have a crawl space under that big old building, believe it or not. And that crawl space is now a mess. So, Russell and his folks have a lot of work to do over the coming weeks. So, it's going to be kind of tough. But I see Heath, I'll go ahead and throw kudos out to Heath. Saw, missed him sneaking in there. So, over, I think, I think with the report I looked at today was over 13,000 people have been vaccinated in Lee County. And close to half of that number, second shots. So, we are, we were motoring through. North Carolina was ranked number one in the country in vaccinating people over 65. And we're probably right there with them. Last week, when we were able to purge the list and get every, and everybody, all the duplicates and people who've gotten shots in other county out of our system, we're, we're pretty much, I wouldn't say we're completely finished with one and two, but we're close. At least the people who have signed up. And one of the issues that we're concerned about is now, people who didn't sign up in categories one and two are now starting maybe to have second thoughts and sign up. And effective March 10th, those folks will be blended with group three. And group three is enormous for us. So, you kind of, you know, people who are in their groups, just remember, as you're going along, if you choose not to get vaccinated, you lose your priority. We don't stop every, we don't stop group three and go back to one and twos. You're just, you're just going to be in line with everybody else at that point. So, if there are anybody's out there that have doubts or second thoughts in groups one and two, they need to go ahead and start registering quickly because we started with group three registrations today. That's my update, sir.
How are we done with teachers? Have we completed all the teachers that were?
We completed the Lee County Board of Education staff on Wednesday with the first shots. And this Wednesday, we'll do the private schools, charter schools, and employee, and citizens who live in Lee County but teach outside of the county. So, so that's a good group.
And childcare?
And childcare, yes, sir.
Outstanding.
Yeah. So, we, they'll, they'll have their first shots and be moving on. So, we're, we're motoring along. We had a lot of great comments. I thank Dr. Brian for his letter that went out Friday complimenting Heath and his staff and how well things worked on Wednesday. They have, they have the civic center processed down to, down to an art form right now. So, it's, it's moving pretty good.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir, I'm finished. Thank you.
Any questions of the manager? All right, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Carver, start with you, sir.
I don't have anything tonight, other than the fact I'm going to get my second shot tomorrow.
Okay.
No guarantees it won't hurt you, either.
You'll be all right.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
No comments? Commissioner Lavalley?
Yes. So, the Johnson Lee Harnett Community Action Board met in February and they gave an overview of just what they've been doing through COVID, working a lot on, on helping people stay in their homes. And like we already know, they just reiterated the concern when the eviction comes back and families will be affected by that. So, they were just explaining the programs they're doing and they've been able to just tremendously help throughout this time. And then one thing I wanted to share was, they received a grant for Hurricane Florence. And it's for Lee, of course, Lee, Johnson and Harnett. So, if there are any families in Lee County that have been affected by that, we're getting funding now, but it's reimbursement for that. As of right now, no one in Lee County has claimed any effects from it. So, the funding will just move to one of the other counties. But this is your last call if your house has been affected at all by it. And I just wanted to thank everyone that came out tonight and talked about swimming. I think it's something that's very important and I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go out Wednesday as well, some of the other commissioners, to see what was going on with the teacher vaccinations and everything. Just want to give Heath a compliment. Everything, it looked like it was running real well and glad to see that happen.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I'd just like to encourage everyone that not gotten a shot, get your shot, wear your mask, keep your distance, wash your hands, stay away from me. I also want to congratulate the chief of police of Sanford, Chief Yarborough, 50th year anniversary. That's quite an accomplishment. That really is. That's almost unheard of, 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovick?
Again, Heath and your crew and, and everyone in the county. I told you, you get tired of hearing me, appreciate what you do. But as, our way down to the flood, you know, you talking about, or the things you have, it takes everything from our county employees. And thank you so much for that. The shots, like I say, thank you for each one of the commissioners that had time to come out for that. That, that means a lot to our, our citizens. And, you know, and I think that's what we ought to be out there. They're, they're part of our county and we're doing the right thing on that. And I just love the way we're coming together as county commissioners and doing the right thing for our, our citizens that voted us in. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. For the benefit of the commissions, on Friday, I had a meeting with Sam Schumate, who's the field representative for Congressman Ted Budd's office. Now, the 13th district is, from what I understand, coming down 421 to US Route 1 and everything west. So, I left the contact information on the three of yours because those are for the at-large seats in your district. On Wednesday, I had the opportunity to go visit the civic center and watch the proceeds going on as far as immunizations. And I can tell you, having been in the Army for 20 years and getting a shot all the time, I never saw so many people with smiling faces going to get immunized. So, I got to admit, that was definitely an eye-opener. And I want to say thank you to the commissioners that took time to come visit, help out, watch. I tried to thank everybody that I could before I had to go on to other things. But again, Heath, we can't say enough to the health department, the staff, the state, the school nurses, everybody that put that together on Wednesday. So, thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. We want our folks to get well, stay safe, and hopefully get things back to normal as soon as possible. Those are my comments. Do I have a motion? Motion to adjourn has been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thank you.